Good morning. We now begin the May -- March 17th session of the Wycomico County Council Meeting. Those of you who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance to Jesus, please do.
Our Father, and our Son, and our Holy Spirit, give us your stay and give us your reverence, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us, and be the sign of salvation, that the rest will be with us, with the power and glory of our Father. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I could tell almost immediately it wasn't going to be a problem getting the Lord's Prayer done today. I appreciate the attendance of everybody here. Everybody has a seat if there's room? If you allow someone to have a chair, let them know there's a chair available. I'd appreciate it. And we will get started. Mr. Kramer, good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President.
Let me go through the minutes first.
Very well, sir.
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion, if I could, to approve the minutes from March 3rd, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, corrections? Minutes seen none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. The Chair has pulled the open work session minutes from March 3rd, giving us a chance to rework those if you would bear with us. Following along, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes from March 3rd, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seen none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Closed work session minutes are approved. At this time, I would like to welcome a very special guest of ours, Sheriff Mike Lewis. Sheriff Lewis has some presentations he would like to make. Sheriff Lewis, how are you?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Morning, folks. Good to see everyone. I would like to make a couple of presentations to several of our deputies that are being recognized by the National Sheriff's Association. First of all, I'd like to ask, if we could, have Sergeant John Allison-Dreney, Corporal Chris Taylor, Deputy First Class Shelley Lewis, and Deputy First Class Christine Kirkpatrick, please come forward. Stand behind me, please. On September 12th, 2014, deputies of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office were dispatched to an address on Parker Road here in Wycomico County for a report of a barricaded subject who had threatened to kill himself with a long gun. Suffering from mental illness, the subject had made it clear he wanted to die, and unfortunately, it was the subject's intention to die at the hands of law enforcement, something known as suicide by cop. Sergeant John Allison-Dreney, Corporal Chris Taylor, Deputy First Class Shelley Lewis, and Deputy First Class Christine Kirkpatrick were the four deputies who responded that day. And based on the fragile and compassionate interaction these deputies had with this subject, they were able to successfully facilitate his peaceful surrender, amazingly with no engine to himself or law enforcement personnel. We often hear of the violence associated with our jobs. Rarely do we hear the valorousness, performance, patience, and perseverance exemplified by our own local law enforcement. Today, we recognize these admirable traits as those of a Wycomico County Deputy Sheriff. The National Sheriff's Association has recognized Sergeant John Allison-Dreney, Corporal Chris Taylor, Deputy First Class Shelley Lewis, and Deputy First Class Christine Kirkpatrick for their valuable contributions to the community and to the field of criminal justice and law enforcement. Accordingly, they have been awarded the prestigious National Sheriff's Association Medal of Merit. In addition to the certificate from the National Sheriff's Association that arrived at our office two weeks ago, each of the deputies will wear a ribbon and a pin on their uniforms. Thank you, John. Christine. Thank you. I'd like to have two more deputies step forward if they would. That would be Deputy First Class Scott Hamilton, Deputy First Class Andrew Rigan. On December 29th, 2013, just four days following Christmas, deputies from the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office were dispatched to Rose Street here in Salisbury for a report of unattended children. Deputies quickly learned that there were eight children living in the home, ranging from the ages of six weeks old to 10 years old. These children were living in conditions that can only be described as uninhabitable. The only source of heat in this home on this cold December day was the oven, while the children were in the process of boiling hot dogs for their only source of food. Deputies thoroughly documented the scene to include the condition of each of the eight children, documented and verified their names, their dates of birth, took witness statements, and provided all contact information, and they thoroughly photographed the residence and squalor these children were living in. It was clear that the deputies were dedicated to the protection, safety, and welfare of these children. Deputies also learned that the mother or caretaker of these children had a history of contacts with the Maryland Department of Social Services. Because of the tenacity, documentation, and overall high-quality work performed by Deputy First Class Scott Hamilton and Deputy First Class Andrew Rigan, the suspect was convicted of eight counts of child neglect and sentenced to 10 years in state prison. The National Sheriff's Association has recognized Deputy First Class Scott Hamilton and Deputy First Class Andrew Rigan for their invaluable contributions to the community and the feudal criminal justice and law enforcement. Accordingly, they too have been awarded the prestigious National Sheriff's Association Medal of Merit, and I'm very proud to present those to them here today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to say, Sheriff, that on behalf of the Wycomico County Council, each and every one of you, we are very proud of your exemplary service. Not only are you excellent representatives for the Sheriff's Department as a whole but for Wycomico County, we seriously do appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good morning again, Mr. President.
Did we get us started?
Members of the county council, ladies and gentlemen. First item for your consideration today is Resolution Number 35, 2015, at the request of the county executive to prohibit parking of motor vehicles on the easterly side of Arbutus Drive between Honeycrumble Drive and Mack Lane.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 35, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This comes before the county council as a result of expression of concerns of residents on the street.
Okay.
I've visited the site and understand why they're trying to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I've been there as well, Joe. All those in favor of Resolution 35, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 41, 2015, at the request of the county executive, confirming the appointment of Matt Holloway to the Delmarva Resource and Development Council.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 41, 2015.
So moved.
Second? And a second. Any discussion? Any lengthy discussion?
Who is this guy?
Okay. Seen none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Congratulations.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 52, 2015, at the request of the county executive, approving the capital program for Wycomico County for fiscal years 2016 through 2020.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 52, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion. Thank you. I know the executive is here today. If you'd like to join us, you certainly may.
Do I get one of those awards of death by council?
Any discussion on part of council members? We have reviewed this before, I know, in work session. Who would like to start off? I think we do understand that the two key issues in this capital improvement program, pretty much, most everything else has gone through the process, and we do know that the two issues of concern, I guess, over and above everything else, would be the notation and the narrative that the Bennett Middle School teardown would be delayed. The second part of that would be exactly how the county would address the West Salisbury school issue, more specifically, whether or not we would want to allow for the $2 million out of the reserves to put this, put West Salisbury into a hoarding pattern since we do not take it off, completely off, the capital improvement plan so that we can continue on in the future. So I'd like to, at this time, open up discussion for the Bennett Middle School concerns, first of all, if we could, please. I believe that's going to be page in the narrative.
Twelve.
Page 12 in the narrative. It's somewhat contentious, I know. I'd also like to thank the Bennett Middle School students that actually held a forum yesterday morning at 8:00 in the morning. I'd say there were 300 people, 300 students?
You said 300.
At least 300 students that were there, completely engaged in the community, which was a great tribute to not only Principal Gruetis, but to Mr. Portier as well, who was the teacher that was involved, and a very well-attended meeting. Where would we go, gentlemen?
I'm looking at some of the highlights. It says the county executive recommends reconsideration of the plan to demolish the existing Bennett Middle School, which is to explore repurposing the structure, two house, among other things, Board of Ed, administrative complex. And there's been further discussion on that. Can you go over that?
Further discussion on? Well, we've had several, I mean, as John said, I met yesterday with the students of Bennett Middle, and several of the athletic students. What I'm asking the council to do is to give me 60 days to find out if we can repurpose the building. Any parts of it, all of it, none of it? I don't know. We're scheduled, Bennett Middle will close down, I believe, June the 5th, and the students will move out and take over there. At that point in time, the contracts are going to be let sometime in April for the demolition. I'm asking for a couple of months to take a look, take people in there to find out if the building can be used for anything, whether it can be used for the Board of Education's office facilities. We know that they're looking at different spots now, rather than, you know, a lot of this all depends on, with them moving to East Salisbury or them moving to Wy Middle depends on vetting this process of redistricting.
Now, there was other discussion, too, the entire building, or just the gym, or...
Well, even the saving of the gym would be good for the future of the athletic fields on the eight acres, if we moved them over to the eight acres, because that's going to give us the benefit of having a field house at some time, locker rooms, it could be used as a community facility, parks and recreation, could have nighttime basketball courts, whatever. I mean, it's got so many uses for it. That one building alone would easily be worth $3 million in its condition right now to have to rebuild that. So you can't say anything until you have a chance to go look at all. That's why I'm asking for 60 days. And I will be the first to tell you that if, in fact, the building is beyond repair, I'll be the first one to send the wrecking ball in.
Right. And part of the problem is that this was dumped in our laps. Some of us that have been newly elected to the council, and we just got this budget, and the project is probably 90% done.
Well, the project has been 90% done. It's phase three. This is the final phase of Bennett Middle completion, and I understand that. And everybody will tell you that this plan has been in works for 10 years, but a lot has changed in 10 years. Wycomico County does not have the money that we had 10 years ago. We've lost jobs. That means we've lost income tax. And I'm not trying to dispel any of the plans for the athletic fields. I want them to go through very much. I mean, I think Mr. Foray and the people at the Board of Education had this well thought out, but dag gone, something's changed, and that's our economy. We don't have the money to go back and build, I can't afford to build the Board of Education a new office facility. So let's try to make do with what we've got. We don't have this vetting process as far as redistricting complete amongst the people yet. It was taken off the plan this year. So, you know, until these things are done, I just feel like we ought to be able to save this.
And I think it may be a building worth saving, but like you said, it's 90% complete, and then reading opinions from the attorneys, our attorney, and trying to interpret and digest the bond language, it's difficult right now.
Well, the contracts have not been let yet, and I believe Mr. Baker confirmed that at our last meeting, that until the contracts are let, you know, we don't have that. Yes, the contract as far as property management or the construction management has been done, but as far as actually demolition, no, it's not been done at this point in time, so.
I understand that, Mark. Councilman Davis, who you...
I just think it's sent a bad message. You've got a project that's been working for 10 years, and now you're 90% complete, and now all of a sudden you want to halt a project that's almost done, that's been planned for 10 years, and the money's already appropriated to tear down the building. So where's your savings at?
I'm sorry, you don't understand the savings when you save a building? But don't you understand?
Okay, when you save the building, that means you're going to have to get monies to redo the building.
Sure.
But the money is already there to tear it down.
But you don't start from scratch. You're starting from a building that's already over, you know? It's got walls up, it's got a roof on it, that kind of stuff.
But you still have to find the money to do that.
Sure. I'm not denying that, but what is the use of the building afterwards? I mean, you know, you're saying tearing it down is more profitable than saving what you've got, and Ernie, that's just not right.
But my thing is, you don't start a project, that's going to send a bad message, so that means every project you start, you get to the end of it, you say, oh, we can save money, we need to stop here and start doing something else?
Well, I'm telling you, things have changed in 10 years.
The money's already there. What's changed? The money's there to tear the building down. What's changed?
Where's the money going to come from to build the new facility for their offices?
Have they came to us about building a new building for offices?
Have you not been following the plan? That's the plan they've been telling us about. You know, so, I mean, has it come across our desks? No.
Okay.
As I said, West Salisbury never came across our desk as far as the CIP of the county government. It was on their CIP, but it was not on the county's CIP. Look, I mean, it's your vote, you do what you want to. I have tried to save money and see what I can do as far as that goes, and you're welcome to vote against it. I mean, that's your prerogative, and you live with that vote, and I'll live with the fact that I'm trying to save the county some money.
What's the cost of demolishing the building?
I believe it's $3.5, $4 million was set aside, is that...
We have about $9 million. What the exact breakdown is between demolition and the construction of the athletic fields, I'd have to go back and...
So there's about $9 million left?
There's $9 million left.
I've got $9 million.
So if...
We've got $9 million in hand.
Taken a billion down, so there is room for the athletic fields with the building left there.
But at least the front building and possibly the gym needs now, and we were pointed out yesterday by the director of the athletics at Bennett Senior, that there was two extra practice fields drawn on there that we did not have when it was transferred. We can get everything that they want there. We may have to lose one of the buildings, it's true.
Well, in my visits to the building, I noticed there's some that's in better shape than others, so I think that would probably be something, if you get into your study, depending on how the vote goes today, that could be decided then. You know, Dr. Fredrickson made comments last meeting that they were going to have to take either East Salisbury or Wy Middle as offices possibly. That was her plan. And like you said, that's going to cause quite a bit of redistricting. I'm in favor of giving Mr. Culver the time to study this issue. I think it's, it deserves studying, and he's admitted. You know, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, we'll go back. I made a comment to, I don't know if it was John Hall or John Cannon, somebody this morning, if you brought people in this, brought people in that building that had no skin in the game whatsoever, no agenda whatsoever, and said, we're going to tear these buildings down, they would probably be shaking their head.
I think that...
Because that's, that's the, it seems to be the mindset of we just tear everything down, just tear everything down, build everything new. A lot of other jurisdictions don't do that. They remodel what they have. They remodel older schools. You know, we've got Wy Middle's been sitting over there since the '30s, and I've heard the story, well, we only build them for the last 50 years. Well, if you, pole barns are designed to last 50 years, so why don't we build, you know, lesser schools? They're not pole barns. They were built to last longer than 50 years. If the maintenance had kept up on them correctly, as they should have been, they've still been utilized. A few years ago, if they still put air conditioning in them, there probably wouldn't be the discussion we're having today. So I don't have a problem giving Mr. Culver the time to study this.
Councilman, Councilman Kilmer?
You know, we've, this, the CIP was given to us a month and a half past charter deadline. I mean, there's, it's been delayed already a month and a half. Yeah, I applaud the approach you took with West Salisbury. You know, you got us together, some questions about that, but you got us together. You know, we looked at it, you know, there were some experts looked at it, you've worked with the community. I mean, we can talk about this later, but I understand, you know, you're working with the Board of Ed now to keep its place. You know, we, that plan was studied. This, you know, as I mentioned before, you brought to us without any backing, any plan, and you've had, you know, since December 2nd to study it, and now you want another 60 days asking us to delay the CIP. I mean, it's, you know, the contracts have been signed, from what I understand. I mean, the contracts are ready to go, and, you know, we don't have any analysis of the legal situation we're putting ourselves in if we delay this. We don't have any idea of what you think maybe. You're asking us to go on faith here, and, you know, you know I like you, Bob, you know, but, you know, but, you know, it's a little too much for me to swallow, doing something this massive, something that could have serious legal ramifications for us, without knowing any of the answers. We have no knowledge to go on. We have these two paragraphs in the CIP, and that's all you're asking, that's all you've given us for this whole thing. And I've expressed it to you before, I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to sandbag you or anything, but that, I, that's a leap too far for me, because we don't know how much this is going to cost us, how much this will potentially save us. We don't know, again, the legal issues about this, and, you know, I'd be a lot more comfortable supporting you if we had, you know, if you had this information for us that gave us some sort of, you know, an idea of what we're getting ourselves into. But we don't know what we're getting ourselves into if we approve what you've asked us to approve. So that's my concern.
Mark, I appreciate your honesty on that. I'm not thinking that you're trying to sandbag me, but you don't have to answer to me. You have to look in that camera and answer to all those voters that voted for you to try to save money for Wycomico County. And you're right, I've had, I've had three, as you corrected me last time, I've had three months of this job so far, and it's not been the only thing on my agenda, it's just been this CIP. There's been a lot of things come across the desk, and we're all on that learning curve, and I'm telling you, I'm learning as fast as I can. But, again, don't have to worry about me, but answer to all those voters that voted for you that you wanted to save money on the campaign trail, so.
I'm comfortable answering to those voters. I'm comfortable, I'd be comfortable if I had a number about how much money we could save by this.
Well, I'm asking for 60 days. I'm not asking for this project to be put off for 10 years.
Well, you've had three and a half months to get us anything, anything more than two paragraphs. We have no supporting documentation for anything.
Well, I understand that, and again, I asked you if you'd like to go over to Bennett with me and look at it, and you said you all are not going to go with me now because Phil Davis filed the Sunshine Act on that one, so take that up with the Daily Times, not me.
No, I mean, I said that we could go individually. I mean, we can't go, obviously, with the quorum, but we could have gone individually. And, you know, I mean, there was a meeting at Bennett yesterday that, you know, most of our council members didn't know about, talking with the students. So, you know, I mean, there's...
Well, I've got to be honest on that one. I didn't know about all, we were told we were going to go talk to one class or two classes, and that was 60 people, maybe 90 promoted.
Yeah, well, I understand, but I mean, but there's...
But it was fun.
Yeah, so, I mean, but that's, that's my concern.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think Mr. Kilmer said it very well. He's much more eloquent than I am, and that we have, wanting 60 more days, I'm sorry, can't hear?
Yes.
60 more days to evaluate when we've already had 10 years to evaluate is unacceptable to me. We made a commitment, the council made a commitment to this community to go ahead and put this project in. The economy has not changed pretty much since this project was projected. It hasn't gotten any better. It hadn't gotten any worse. It's a sin. We made a commitment based on the economy, and I think we should follow through with the commitment that the council initially made.
Thank you. Councilman Hall. Councilman Hall.
I'd just say, I'm not going to echo what everybody else has said, but one of the issues I see here is continuity. Here we have, and it's no fault of yours, Mr. Culver, but we have four-year terms and we have 10-year projects. It's very tough to get continuity if we're going to stop every four years and put the brakes on everything, and we already have such a long process to get schools built, longer than it should be, and that's something that needs to be addressed and fixed. But if we're going to stop every four years potentially and totally revisit every school project that's going on, I just don't see how we're ever going to address the true issues that we have with our buildings in Wycomico County.
That's a good point. Yep.
My point would be, Bob, that I appreciate, and I applaud the fact that you were trying to save the taxpayers' money. I would guess that every person at this table wants to save the taxpayers' money. That's our highest priority. I think the concern here that has been expressed is the fact that we are in sort of an unknown territory. We do not know whether or not, we believe that the state might pull back $2 million from the original bonding, which we would lose if we were to change midstream. We don't know what it's going to cost to renovate Bennett Middle School. We don't know what it might cost if we only partially tear down Bennett Middle School. We have absolutely no idea what it's going to cost to prepare that building for the Board of Education's administrative offices. If we were to even consider doing that, no one has even considered or put before us any plans for what we would do with the current administrative offices on Long Avenue. That could be another series of questions that would come into play. It could cost $2 million to tear that building down, and would we want to? Should we? I think the real purpose here, you know, outside of the fact that there are good intentions, the reason it's a five-year CIP is because these processes need to be established in increments of five years with solid planning. 60 days is not enough, I think, in order for us to even decide where we're going to go and what it truly will cost the taxpayers if we go down that road. And as Ernie said, the money has been bonded, the project is ready to go, and I think we should continue in that process. But we do appreciate what your efforts are, Dave. I don't want to miss that.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Just make a couple of comments. I guess, going to Mr. Hall's comments, certainly from the inception of this progress, to say that the economy hasn't changed is a stretch. Since this project was first put on the boards, we've endured the deepest recession in my lifetime. Things have changed. We met yesterday with the election board on their budget. The election board needs, according to them, needs a new building, and it appears that we're going to have to build a new building. That's a change. Things do change over a period of 10 years. When Mr. Davis asks, well, what changed? A lot of things changed. The economy changed, the county's needs have changed. The executive, and when you ask, you know, why don't we have any discernible plans to go by? Well, you know, we don't have budget appropriation to even engage people to do those plans.
Are you asking for that today? Because you wouldn't have it in the next 60 days either.
The, if, if, if in fact, if in fact, you were to adopt what the executive has proposed, you could certainly embed money in the CIP to do those kinds of architectural investigations. You know, we met yesterday with a number of students, and... You know, we met yesterday with, with a number of students, and I'll just give you a little bit of, of perspective. I grew up in East Baltimore. And there are, there are buildings in East Baltimore, if you go to Brown's Wharf, if you go to Fells Point, if you go to Canton, if you go to Tendeko Wharf, there are industrial buildings there that are 100 years old, 100 years old. Heavy industrial buildings that have been repurposed for residential use, retail use, innumerable uses, buildings, buildings that, that, that could have been easily torn down and built something new. But instead, they have been repurposed and they still stand. The, as a developer, what you always look at is you look at a site and say, "Okay, this is a site I want. What's on the site? Is it raw land or is there a building there?" You look at the building, if there's a building there, and you say, "Is it less expensive for me to repurpose that building? Does it cost me less to repurpose that building for the intended use versus tearing it down and building something new?" I've been fortunate enough in the past five years to visit Europe twice. I've seen buildings that are 1,000 years old that have been repurposed, and there is modern on the interior and the exterior as any building you'll see in the United States. To some extent, and this is my personal opinion, this country has become one that is, is a disposable society. Just tear it down and build something new, even with respect to people. We're in a mindset that it's a disposable society. The executive is asking for a brief period to see if there is any way that we could use part of that structure, and that structure, no one is going to convince me that portions of that structure don't have value. Bearing walls, steel members, roofing structures have inherent value.
Concrete.
Concrete. It's a matter of, can you take advantage of that inherent value and repurpose the building for assumption, for something like elections? Or for something like many of the other needs that we have? When you say, "How are we saving money?" We're saving money by taking advantage of the existing structure, repurposing it, as opposed to tearing a structure down and starting from scratch on another structure. So, so, you know, coming from construction and development, you know, you're, you're, every time you tear a building down, you're taking the risk that you're destroying value.
Any other comments?
Mr. Strasburg, why are you having this conversation with us? Why aren't you having it with the Board of Education?
We have had the discussion with the Board of Education.
And, and you've reached a conclusion?
That's why we're here.
Because you haven't reached a conclusion.
I don't make decisions with the Board of Education. The executive and the county council make those decisions. I try to offer my opinion, I try to lend my expertise, I try to carry out whatever the instructions from the elected leadership are. Is that a clear enough answer?
It's pretty close.
Thank you.
The main reason we're here is because it was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
You know, Wayne, thank you for your input on that, and I got to agree with you, you know, if you, and like I said before, if you, if you took people in that building with no skin in the game whatsoever, that have never been in the building before, maybe never even been in the county, and you said, "What, we're going to tear this building down and, you know, we've got room for playing fields over here, but we're going to tear it down anyway because it's there." I think, and here's, here's the problem I have with the 60 days. I, I know the 60, 60 days isn't a long time, and I realize that, and John mentioned that 60 days isn't enough time. And I think what you're going to have to have is time enough to get somebody in there and say, "Okay, this part can be saved, that part can be saved." But this disposable society you're talking about, you know, I agree with you, it goes on, all the time. You know, it's, you wonder, I mean, in a retail situation, maybe, maybe it's viable for Walmart to go in and tear down a building they put up 10 years ago because they want to put up a bigger building, because they have the means to sell enough retail goods to make up the difference and pay for it. But in this situation, we have to look to the taxpayer to make up the difference. And if we can save 5 million, or 2 million, or 10 million by what we're doing, you know, I think it's worth looking at, I really do.
And I think that's how we should progress forward, without a doubt. I think that's, that's, you know, the responsibility of the executive branch and the council and the Board of Education is to save whatever we can in, in the future. And if it's through renovations instead of replacement, I would applaud that. I think the problem here is a matter of timing, more than anything. And, as, as Councilman Kilmer said, the unknown. We do not know if this is a money-saving venture. We do not know that.
Well, the-
Any other council comments?
The future is tomorrow.
If I can make just one last comment. In our meetings with the board, and I don't want to speak for the executive, but if it's okay with you, I will, we, we certainly, in, in, in this proposal, I don't think the executive is intending to delay the construction of the athletic fields, and having those fields available for the students. What we're trying to, to say is, we've got eight, eight and a half acres lying vacant. Is there a way to save a portion of the structure, reconfigure the athletic fields, providing the same facilities that we would have otherwise? And, and I can't tell you whether we can deliver that in the timeframe given or not. Mr. Ferreze said that there are processes that we would have to go through with the state. We understand that. When you say, "We don't know whether it's going to save us any money or not," no, we don't know that. But we also don't know that it won't save us money.
Any other council?
Yes. I guess I'm concerned is that you're coming to us on the day when we're supposed to approve this and saying this instead of the day when this was submitted. I mean, this was not what was said to us the day that this was submitted. This is something that is different than what came to, came to us with the CIP. I mean, this, this sounds like a reasonable plan, and if it would have, you would have said this, you know, a month ago, a month and a half ago, you would have had some time to start this process and show us originally. But this, this idea about needing 60 days to study it, that's, that's something that I had to read in Greg Bassett's, you know, his Facebook page yesterday. That, that's something that was new to me. And so that, that's what's concerning me, is that there is a, it seems to be nothing solid here that for us to wrap our, you know, brains around, we can't, we can't vote on a concept, we need to vote on what's in the CIP. And when the CIP came, it had these two paragraphs, that's all. And now you're coming to us saying you want 60 days to study it. Well, that, that 60 days should have started when this was submitted February 3rd, or, or back in January, or, or something else, because we, we've already pushed back, approved the CIP by a month and a half.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that meeting, unfortunately, but, but I, I would simply read the one line in the CIP that addresses this. "The county executive recommends reconsideration of the plan to demolish the existing Bennett Middle School and wishes to explore repurposing the structure to house, among other things, the BOE administrative complex."
That's not much to go on.
You, you, however long ago that was, to, to, to respond, I don't know that the executive has received any inquiries from council members as to what he would need to do that, or what his plans were to do that, or what concerns you may have had.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, there's probably nobody in this room that, and maybe they do, but likes architecture and buildings more than I do. I spend a lot of time in Williamsburg, it's where a lot of my vacations are, because I'm looking at the architecture and the structure of buildings. Like Mr. Strasburg said, Baltimore City, I love looking at those buildings. I think timing is an issue. Timing is an issue. I'd love to give you 60 more days, but they're waiting, the public's waiting. I think we voted, one of the previous meetings, to delay this vote until March 17th. There, I, I don't have a whole lot of information to base my support on. There was a meeting with Bennett yesterday, and I had no idea. I would love to have gone to listen to 300 students, nobody told me about that meeting. Communication is a problem there as well, and I do want to support you. If, if this board will support moving this for 60 days for you, I can do that, but I don't see that happening. Reading the bond information, there's hint in there about, and I'm not a lawyer, but there's hint in there that you can't repurpose that building for other government entities. So, the unknown comes forward as well. And I do want to support you, I really do. If these guys right here say, "Let, make a motion to give you 60 days," I can support you, but I, I'm not feeling that.
Any other comments?
I do feel the love, I really do.
Let me, let me just, and, and look, you all vote whatever way you want to, like I say, I've made my piece on this. But yesterday's class, I was invited to go, I didn't send out invitations, I don't know who.
Yeah, I don't want to get distracted, Bob, I appreciate it. I'll address that later, Larry.
But the point of it is, is like I say, I didn't know anything about it, so I, I went, and it wasn't up to me to invite anybody else, so.
I would say if this came to us a year ago, it would be a different story, but right now, I'm going to move that we remove the last two paragraphs under Wycomco County Board of Education in, on page 12 of the CIP. Make that a motion.
Second.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
That is the section, starting with the county executive recommends and ending with the completion of BMS, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion on the floor to amend the capital improvement program and to remove the section as reference on the bottom two paragraphs on page 12. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Posed.
Motion carried, those two sections will be amended. Everything in order there, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I can put the proper wording in for you.
Okay. All right. Further discussion on the, the rest of the capital improvement program, I would suggest council may bring up any issues they want. We know that the $2 million for West Salisbury-
Two, two.
Excuse me?
Two point two.
Two point two, thank you. The two point two is the question at hand, so I would entertain that if there are no other items on the capital improvement program, that we move forward with the West Salisbury issue.
Mr. Strasburg, what, what's, what's a two point two for specifically?
The two point two originally, as the CIP was submitted, was to, to renovate the existing structure. And I believe, once, once we received the letter from Dr. Lever with regard to the state's position on renovating that structure, and we received that letter, when, Bob?
A week and a half ago.
About a week and a half ago. It appears that, it doesn't appear, the state, the state has said that that school cannot be renovated. So, the two point two, to my way of thinking, and again, I don't want to speak for the executive, the two point two remains in the CIP to continue to move the project forward. The executive staff has met with the Board of, of Education, we have discussed how we might proceed with West Salisbury Elementary School. We, we have, we have a tentative plan that we would like to explore, but it's probably too early for us to address that. So, the two point two is to keep this project in the mainstream, moving ahead, determining how, how we will address the needs of that, of that community. As you know, there, there, there were two different propositions. One was to replace the school for the existing population. Then, there was a second proposal that came through in this year's CIP request to essentially double the capacity of the school. And when you talk about planning, again, I'll go back to, when I get thrown a curveball like that within a period of 12 months, and I'm trying to do a, basically, a decade of planning for capital spending, makes it pretty hard. Makes it very, very hard to double the expenditure for a school in the space of 12 months with little or no warning.
Did Dr. Lever say why the school couldn't be renovated?
I could get the letter for you, I, I-
No, he didn't want to say why.
So, in other words, from, from here on out, if Dr. Lever says we need a new school, we get a new school, we have to fund it?
I, I can't, I, I can't, I can't articulate-
Those conversations are still ongoing.
Pardon me?
Those conversations are still ongoing. Just because he says we should rebuild doesn't mean we've got the money to rebuild, so.
As a clarification for the audience as well, what this is saying, for the most part, is that the two point two million, we are going to take that out of reserves so that we can put the West Salisbury project in the queue, keep the West Salisbury project in the queue. This is not a decision as to whether a replacement is going to be made, or renovation is going to be made at this time. It simply allows the executive and the council and other parties involved to make that decision as to what will be the best choice. There will be plenty of time in the future for discussion to be held as to exactly what is the best purpose of that, that building and that land, just so that you're clear. We are not voting for renovation today, we're not voting for a replacement. It's simply to put this two point two million dollars in the capital improvement program so that we can keep this project-
Moving it.
Moving forward. Moving forward.
And again, I, I want to reiterate that we had a very, very good meeting with the Board of Education about this school, and I think Bob and I left that meeting feeling, feeling optimistic about our ability to, to arrive at a solution that would be a good solution for the Board of Education, for the community, and, and for the county.
Excellent.
Mr. President, thank you for that clarification. Because I think there's a lot of people in the public that still don't understand what's going on with that project, and I, I think that explanation was spot on, and so thank you for that.
Thank you. It's a rare moment for me.
Councilman?
I have a question. In, in the charts for capital improvement program for the five years, it has $2 million for West Salisbury. Do we need, need to amend that to two point two?
It has a 200,000 prior.
Yeah, there's money, yeah, there's, yeah, there's money already there, Mark.
So, we just, okay.
And what you would see, I mean, in all likelihood, Mark, what you would see is, is next year, when we do our five-year forecast, you would see whatever money needs to be in the queue over the next three to four years to fund whatever it is we're going to do queued up. On the other hand, I can tell you with certainty that if we're going to queue up the money that, that I've been told that the county would have to appropriate in order to build a replacement school, and I'm going to say right now, a replacement school of the same size for the same population, we're going to have to then determine what projects we're going to eliminate from the CIP because it's on the order of $18 million that we're going to have to fund, and, and I don't have a source for it, and that means I've got to eliminate other projects.
So, so that is the replacement school for the school of the same size, is that the project that's a total of 20?
Twenty six point four, something like that.
And it's the, the 41 million dollar school is the 650 student school?
So, doubling the capacity of the school, essentially.
Okay, okay, so, okay. So, so the county would have to get $18 million for the 20?
For the replacement school.
Got you.
Now, and remember too, it's not being said now, if we do the replacement school at the same facilities, it's going to take up enough ground. We've got to buy, build another place for the choices school. So, what we're actually, we're, we're removing the choices, and we're going to have to do that too at the same time. So, that's not even been brought into the picture yet.
Any other council comments?
Is there any, I guess this might be for Mr. Baker, is there any language that needs to be added, or?
What I put is adding after the now therefore be it resolved paragraph in your existing resolution, and put be it further resolved that the county council, Wycomco County, declines the request of the executive to reconsider the plan to demolish the existing Bennett Middle School, and removes the final paragraph on page 12, if that's acceptable.
You're saying that that would be-
But mine's more-
That would be the amendment.
Yeah, but more for the West Salisbury. Is there any language that needs to be inserted?
West Salisbury, no, it's, it's already in there, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other council discussion?
Let me just clarify. Ed, should, should we say that in the CIP, should the wording be changed from renovation to renovation and/or replacement?
What page are you on?
No, I don't know.
If it was, right, right now it's listed as renovation, you would like to add and/or replacement?
And/or replacement, I think that's, I think that's a proper clarification.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Right now it's listed as renovation.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll make-
So, we'll make that correction, I believe we can just do that without a formal amendment, councils, so. Any other discussion on the West Salisbury? Any other discussion on the capital improvement program?
I would like to thank County Executive's Office for the work you've done on this. And one thing that I would like to bring forward is Winter Place Park Carriage House exterior renovation. Needed for a long, long time, I've been hearing about that for probably eight years or more.
It'll be ready for the Farm and Home Show.
That's wonderful, and there's a lot of other good things in here too, but that's one thing I didn't want to mention that's in my district, and a lot of people that I know utilize that facility, and we don't have to be ashamed of it anymore, maybe.
Councilman Doug.
Mr. Culver, I echo what Joe said, thank you for the hard work on there, and then you have a lot on your plate, you really do. And I guess we do too. The Orthopoduce Stadium, I was looking at the economic analysis, there was some discussion in previous meetings. What we invest in twenty years, it should bring, according to my calculations, over three million dollars if we invest the two honors. Yes, but the state ends up getting thirteen million with their investment. Too bad we weren't on that end of the spectrum. The stadium, I think, is something this county needs, it is a gem. And there's other things that the stadium does other than baseball, the Relay for Life, Delmar the Bike. We, one thing that we did in the past, we used to have concerts there, I wouldn't mind seeing that happen again to bring more people to the area, if we could use the stadium for that.
Tourism, tourism would be the one to organize that, certainly bring it up to their attention.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other council comments?
When is our contract up with Seventh Inning Stretch?
Should be twenty years from now, it's renewed.
Twenty-sixteen.
It's twenty-sixteen, Ernie.
So, we get to renew, so we get to bring them in and try to renegotiate that contract.
But that's for the concession stand?
No.
That's for everything?
Yeah.
That's, that's for the Shorebirds staying here in this community, and, and we moved that up, Ernie, because we wanted to protect Seventh Inning Stretch's affiliation with the Baltimore Orioles.
So, we get to negotiate with them?
We have been negotiating with them for quite some time. We're, we, we will be bringing you the proposed lease agreement. Probably sometime in April.
Is it better than the one we have?
That's all a matter of opinion, I would suppose. We did our best, we did our best.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Fifty-two, two thousand and fifteen as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motions carried, resolution passes, thank you very much. Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number Fifty-three, two thousand and fifteen, at the request of the County Executive in support of an application to the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development for the purpose of expanding the existing Arts and Entertainment District. This resolution was, well, the same purpose was before you earlier, it comes back to you today because the original resolution passed by the council only included the benefits to the district as were, or as are presently provided, and were provided in the original approval. The Arts and Entertainment District Group and the City of Salisbury have now approved that as well to provide additional incentives in the, to recipients and businesses and operations in the Arts and Entertainment District. That's the reason it's coming back to you, for additional action. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Fifty-three, two thousand and fifteen. So, move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Day and Ms. Kortowski, and I don't know who else might be here in support of that, but they are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you, glad to have you here. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motions carried, resolution passes, thank you. That's all I have for right now, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Good morning, Mr. Baker.
Good morning, sir. Public notice was given that a public hearing would be held today at a meeting to, for an amendment, consider an amendment to the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan. Wycomico County Board of Education is requesting an amendment to the Water and Sewer Plan to update Water Map Number Seven to extend water and sewer mains located in John Deere Drive to serve Beaver Run Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, this time we are going to, we're having a public hearing in reference to the resolution as stated. Anyone that would like to make a comment in reference to this specific resolution? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. I would like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Fifty-four, two thousand and fifteen. So, move. Second?
Second.
Any council discussion?
Long time coming.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motions carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next item for your consideration is the introduction of legislative Bill Twenty-Fifteen-oh-two, an act to impose and declare a moratorium of six months on the imposition and collection of the public school impact fee for new single-family detached residences as provided in Chapter One-Thirty of the Wycomico County Code in order to study the issue and possible implementation of new legislation. The legislative bill you have in your packet was a normal legislative bill that would take effect, I believe, on July first, at the request of the executive. They would like to make that an emergency piece of legislation. And I have a copy for you if you introduce that. Basically declares an emergency situation that requires the moratorium. The difference is that the bill would take effect immediately upon its adoption, subject to a referendum. So, if you, it would take effect immediately, and then if it's called a referendum, it would be postponed until after the referendum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. There is no longer the sixty days necessary for the public?
No, the sixty days between the adoption and becoming law is not needed. It becomes law at the time it's adopted, but your citizens still have a referendum period.
What is the purpose of being established as emergency legislation, clarification?
Take effect immediately.
I know, but what defines emergency legislation?
Pretty much anything that the council wants to call emergency, the Charter does have limitations. It cannot be financial, it cannot involve a person's office, but this does not fall into the exceptions to emergency. There's nothing in the Charter that would prohibit the introduction of this as emergency, other than that, emergency is not defined.
You still have the advertisement period, though?
Yes.
Still has to be honored?
The emergent, calling it emergency legislation only changes the effective date
Okay.
at the time it's adopted.
Okay.
We saw it go through the public hearing process.
Right. So, when could you have, when, if you did this, when would you put it on, vote on it, next meeting, or?
Sorry, have to count my days. No, it'd have to be the second meeting, you can't get the advertising in between now and the first meeting in April.
April twenty-first.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the second meeting in April, so.
Is that stretching it out?
Twenty-first.
So, if it passes, it still won't take effect until July first?
I know, it's emergency legislation, it would take effect immediately.
Right after, so it could be as early as April twenty-first?
Yeah.
Immediately would be April twenty-first, is that right?
Yeah.
The day we pass it.
Right, that meeting on the twenty-first.
Well.
If we had the public hearing and we voted on it.
It's when it becomes law, so when you, when the council votes on it, and say you approve it, then it has to go over to the executive office and be signed by the executive, so twenty-first, twenty-second.
Is there any reason it's single detached versus duplexes or townhouses?
I think if. Last time, we had a single detached home, single-family homes, trying to spur the economy to start single-family home construction.
Great idea.
And if you recall, last time, just as you all were coming on, some of you were, we had seventy-four permits done through a grant program. I'm asking that we don't do the grant, in other words, I'm taking it out of right pocket and putting it in the left pocket with the grant. But if we go ahead and just simply put a moratorium on it for six months, we pulled seventy-four permits at a total of ten million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of homes being built in that short period of time, in less than four months. And that has added to our tax base Wycomico County, a little over a hundred thousand dollars, plus municipalities, the different cities that those homes were built in, have added, I think, about sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars in their taxes. So, I'm trying to increase the economy by building, building our tax base.
And it's a good idea, and the question was single-family detached, I know there's a lot of duplexes that, I guess that would be defined as attached.
They're attached, yes, yeah.
So, it's just single-family?
Single-family homes, is all.
On a lot by itself.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I like what you're doing here, I.
One or two is not bad, huh?
Exactly, exactly, so. My question is, I'm not a big fan of just doing it for six months. I think that that kind of introduces a lot of uncertainty into the building trade, you know, builders may artificially speed up, you know, their, their work to get into the six months. What I, I may, just to put counsel on warning, I may ask for an amendment to this, once it's introduced, to just make the moratorium permanent, and then.
You're my man.
I mean, I'm not sure all the issues with that, but, you know, just, just remove the of six months, and then, you know, the impact fee still exists, it can still be revived, but it's put off indefinitely until a further council or executive revives it, but that's, that's what I may do.
And I appreciate that, I would be right with you. The only reason we're asking for six months, that was on advice of Mr. Baker, because if we went any longer than that, we may have the problems of those building the apartments wanting a moratorium on their impact fee also. So, that was on the advice of Ed Baker, but I, at the same time, I agree with you, I would much rather have it just washed away, yeah.
I mean, well, Mr. Baker, would there be, is there a, is that what, is that a legal issue? Or is that we may just get people coming in here pressuring us to do it for them? I mean, is that a legal issue or a political issue, is what I'm asking?
Which one, the terms to a year, or?
No, the, whether or not the.
Permanent.
Yeah.
The moratorium.
The moratorium with making it permanent.
And just taking it off a single family rather than single.
I mean, it's still a legal issue, it reduces our exposure when you drop it to only six months.
Uh, what do you mean, it's?
Less likelihood of being sued from the six-month period if we view it.
So, why, so why would we be sued over this?
Treating two, two types of housing differently, without any documentation or studies to prove that they have different economic impacts. Equal protection clause under the Constitution would be the most likely.
Moratorium in all of it, on single-family and multifamily.
Well, that seems like the legal thing to do.
I think it might.
I'll sign off on that, too.
Well, I guess that's something to discuss, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall?
I think while, while this has some merit, we haven't seen the merit yet. We've asked for the economic impact from our accountant, which we have not gotten yet. We have seen no results except an increase in housing, and it's, and it's really interesting. But when you look at the statistics, you see that the net fiscal gain is generally had by the contractor, the building developer, and the person who's building the home, there's a one-year fiscal gain. Fiscal, I'm sorry, not physical, fiscal. And then we have the tax benefit, which kicks in after that. Now, what happens with the tax benefit is it's actually not a fiscal gain. It's something called the cost to community served, becomes part of cost of the community services. There was a study done in two thousand and two in Wycomico County, it has not been updated since that date. In two thousand and one, the State of Maryland did an economic study that showed that every time you built a single-resident house, for every dollar spent, it cost a dollar twenty-one cents to provide services. This is residential housing, every time we built a house, it cost a dollar twenty-one cents in services. Every time we support a commercial industry, for every dollar of revenue the commercial industry generates, it only costs thirty-three cents in services. For farmers, it only costs ninety-six cents for services. So, every time we build a house, we lose money is what it amounts to. We need to focus more on generating income for the commercial and the business industry than we do on the residential industry. And I think we're making a mistake when we take this impact fee and we just do away with it because it becomes a direct burden on the taxpayer.
Mr. Hall, was that study two thousand and two as well?
This study was two thousand and two for the State of Maryland, or for Wycomico County. It should be updated, there's no question about it, but I think if we find that it's updated, that it'll be updated to a higher cost of services per residential family.
Was that the Tischler study?
Farming.
Tischler, Tischler study?
No, this was the American Farmland Trust.
What would the Farmland Trust do with residential homes?
Who were they?
I mean, what would they be studying residential?
Well, they were studying, actually, the impact that expenses were on agriculture, and this became part of it. And the same with the State of Maryland, which is, was done by the American Farmland Trust also. Community, cost of community services studies, making a case of conservative.
Could you, could you provide that study to the rest of the council?
I think it would be a good idea, don't you? And I think if anything else, we should postpone this and go ahead and update the study possibly.
I'd like to look at the assumptions in that, it seems that, you know, by that case, then the county should have been losing money during two thousand and three to two thousand and eight, when there was a building boom, and when I look at county revenue, it was soaring. So, I think the assumptions in that study are questionable, at the very least, but we can take a look at it, so.
I know that as far as your qualifications go, they're, they're probably.
Just working on the houses, probably.
Councilman Hall, was that a motion that you made or not?
I'd make a motion, we table this.
There's a motion on the floor to table on the second. Motion fails for lack of a second, thank you, continue.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry, yeah, Larry, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
I told Executive Culver several months ago that I'm in full support of this, as long as there is, I call it a sunset clause, but a timeframe on it, which I appreciate you putting the six-month in there. One question I do have, and maybe you can answer, maybe Jack Lennox can answer, is since we ran out of the funds in the grant program, approximately how many requests have, have been received so that we know, is there still demand for this?
Thank you, Mr. President, the, we've received a number of inquiries, those who have chosen to be on the formal waiting list, which means filling out an application is three.
Three.
However, that's also come through the, through the worst months of the year.
Sure.
We're anticipating later this week, things will pick up.
Okay.
We are in spring, and that's why we're asking for the emergency legislation versus going through to July. People are going to start building in the spring, that's how the people do, contractors do, so. We would like to get it going as soon as possible, and talking to some of the other contractors, I realize they're all ready to start.
Okay, yeah, and I do, I would support revisiting that study, having a new study done, just so that we have numbers and figures, if we were going to potentially go for a full moratorium, I would love to actually base it off of something.
With an updated study.
Yeah.
Could I, Mr. President, could I clarify something, the, the numbers that Mr. Hall quoted are certainly valid, they're a fiscal impact study. It has to do with the cost of providing services to certain population, and we know, for example, the farmers do not ask much of us. So, therefore, the dollars that they pay, thank you, Mr. Hall. The dollar in taxes that they pay have a net revenue overall, long-term, to the county in terms of providing services. You start to back off of that the further away you get from those passive uses. What it does not take into account is the impact on the economy in jobs and income. So, that's a fiscal study.
So, it doesn't take that into?
It doesn't take into, it's, it's the cost of community services. So, if you look at that and you say, which of your constituents, you know, use services, which of them pay more than others? That's what that evaluates.
You're saying it doesn't take into account job growth?
No, sir.
Sales and income taxes and?
No, that would be a different study, frankly.
Okay, that's a good point, thank you for the clarification.
Jack, could you tell the audience who you are, please?
Oh, sure, Jack Lennox Planning and Development Director. Councilman Dodd, you've been very patient.
I just want to, and if I interjected too soon with Mr. Hall, I apologize. But I just wanted to follow up, while it was on my mind, what Mr. Kilmer said, I don't know if he's still going to go through with his motion, and it sounds like a good idea, but I have a question for our attorney. Would it be prudent just to do the six months and then revisit it in six months with your legal concerns?
The normal moratorium is usually between six months and a year, you can't do a moratorium. You can't do a moratorium, it's indefinite, you're essentially repealing the law. And a moratorium is basically for the purposes of studying it, see what the impact is, and that type of thing. So if you've done away with law, there's no need for a moratorium.
So would it be prudent, would it be prudent to just go ahead with the recommendation and revisit it in six months?
Yeah, yeah. You're going to need to come back and revisit it, either in six months or a year, whatever you pick. Six months is the one on the table before this.
Okay. Bobby, you and I talked about this last week, which was my concern, and what Mr. Baker has expressed before, that when you ask for moratorium, we could be opening ourselves up to some liability. The grant process that we did the last time around was terribly successful, the six-month grant was terribly successful. I thought it was a great program, and I was looking to see that re-implemented again, which I am all in favor of. The moratorium, I'm very concerned about, only because our legal counsel has suggested to us that it could open up the county to liability. If both serve the same purpose, I would like to err on the side of caution and amend this to make it a grant program as opposed to a moratorium.
Okay, as I said, we're taking out a right pocket, putting in the left pocket. Now, I can talk with Wayne and Sharon and see what we've got in our budget to do that, to set that aside, as we did economic development last time. Sure. I mean, that works as an economic development stimulus, is what we tried to call that last time, but it was basically the same thing.
Before we go into that, John, I understand your concern, and it might be valid, but that grant process was terribly complicated.
Cumbersome on the person.
From the top all the way to the person that was walking in the office. So if we did do that, we need to come up with a solution where it's not so complicated. I mean, a lot of people just didn't understand, you know, the workings of it, how long you had to get this portion of the house done, so.
I don't think it was a deterrent, though. Owners, but not a deterrent.
No.
No, it didn't appear to be. I think if you did a grant process, and you wanted to stimulate as much house building as you could, we still have money left in our, in the Economic Development Fund that would fund some number of grants. If we then exceeded that amount of money that was left, and if we wanted to continue the process, we'd have to come back to council before the end of this fiscal year and ask for a transfer from contingency. We still have a pretty healthy contingency account, and given that we're now through the winter months, I wouldn't see that that would be, I wouldn't see that that would be an obstacle from a fiscal standpoint, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
John, okay, Mr. Roser has the information that John said we had never gotten, and I think he would provide it with us.
Well, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have time, I think, today to study it. Mr. Roser just got back to town, so he has told us that he will get that to us as soon as he has it completed, and it'll give us time to review.
But, Mr. President, I understand that we will, this is just for introduction only, that's correct?
Correct.
So we can introduce it today, as is. We will be public hearing and voting on it April 21st. So we would have time to get some information on that. I would request that our council provide us maybe with some case law or evidence about the sort of legal issues that were being discussed, and then we can have that information in terms of the legal issues, in terms of, you know, what you were talking about. Hopefully, Mr. Roser will have that information, and then we can, you know, decide moratorium, permanent, grant, on April 21st. I think that would be the...
Thank you for that clarification.
I do know that there are counties surrounding us that have implemented a moratorium, so we can find out what is going on with them, have they got any legal issues.
Yes, so I guess I would move to introduce this, then. I don't know if that's been done yet.
Motion's been done to introduce.
Okay.
One question, one clarification, Mr. Baker, as far as the requests on emergency legislation, how should that be introduced? Is it required as an amendment, or how would the process be done?
Well, I've got an entire bill made up with the emergency language in it. I just added in the last paragraph, in the exercise of its police powers, charter county, the elected officials finding emergency measures necessary, and then changed up the last paragraph to make it effective.
Is there any council member that would like to make an amendment to establish this as emergency legislation per Mr. Baker's comments?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment to make this emergency legislation? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Any other discussion on the main motion as amended? Excuse me.
Get one opposed.
One opposed, I'm sorry, did not hear it, thank you. Any other further discussion on the entire bill as introduced and amended? Seeing that, seeing none, all those in favor of the introduction of Bill 2015-2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, bill passes. Thank you, John. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan.
Jack, take copies of this for all the council members.
At this time, everybody has been very patient, and we certainly do appreciate your patience. We appreciate you being here as well. At this time, we are going to open up the floor for public comments. If you would, you could step to the podium and state your name. We don't require your address, we'd just like to know if you're a resident of Wycomico County or not. So if there's anyone that would like to speak regarding any issue tonight, feel free to go to the podium. Yes, and if you'd like to get in line behind Mr. Fitzgerald, you certainly could do that.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're still morning.
Still morning. I want to thank, on behalf of the students, I'm a resident of Wycomico County, I'm the vice president of the school board, but of the students of JMB, the faculty and the coaches, of your vote to go forward. You know, I've been involved with the school building commission for five and a half years, and been involved in this process. And your vote today was the proper vote, because we've been there. So I want to thank you on behalf of myself and the students for taking this on. I know it's been tough, but again, I want to, any of you that you need to talk, find out information, get up with me, because this is a public education and we're open. And before I leave, I know a lot of residents of West Salisbury is here, but I'm going to speak for replacement of West Salisbury, not refurbishing or up the school. I have taken the time to go through that school. I have sat with the residents and listened to their concerns. I have sat with the principal. It's needed, and those students that go to West Salisbury should not be treated any different than any other student in Wycomico County. So again, I'm glad to see us going forward, back in the process, but I want to thank you. I have to leave, I've got a ball field to get ready. Thank you.
There's no air, it's on heat. I can't help you.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, to the council members, my name is Louis N. Watson, I am the pastor of First Baptist Church. I've been there for over twenty-six years, and I'm here as a representative of the Watchmen Ministerial Alliance. And if I may, I would like for them to stand as ministers who are represented here today. All right. And we're here to speak on behalf of the West Salisbury School, and the faculty members and residents that live in that area, and children who go to that school. We've sat and we've heard some discussion as it relates to the school, whether it be renovated or rebuilt, and certainly it is of a concern to us. We want to see the school rebuilt. I've heard you talking about saving money, but there is no amount of money that you can save that warrants our children to have to learn under the conditions that they're learning under, and the teachers are challenged to teach under. We had the opportunity yesterday to visit that school, and to see that school in the condition that it was in, and the children having to learn under those conditions were unacceptable. To walk through a cafeteria that serves as a cafeteria, a gymnasium, an auditorium, to walk through the school and to see a music room that is in the center of the school, and when music is being played, classrooms and persons who are trying to learn are interrupted. To see portables outside in the back of the yard of the school, where children are having to be transported for learning, and go to a library in inclement weather, in hot weather, is an affront to our community and to our citizens and to our children. Even the bus route that we see, with cars on the side of the bus route, can provide a tragedy, with buses coming and cars backing out, or cars pulling forward, and children trying to get to the cars where their parents are, and children walking in front of the buses. It's not an acceptable situation, and I don't feel that any one of you would have any one of your children, or your grandchildren, or your relatives, to go and learn under those conditions. We saw children learning in closets. We have seen in the past, in the heat, children having to come out with sweat running down them. They're drenched because there's not efficient air, there's not efficient cooling system in West Salisbury School. And when we look around and we see that provisions have been made for Pemberton, for North Salisbury, uh, North Salisbury School, Bennett Middle, Bennett High School, we don't see why, something cannot be arranged, and we cannot find monies to rebuild West Salisbury Elementary School. We're asking that when you reconvene and have your meeting, that you would revisit, that you would recommit, and that you would take into consideration what those children have to go through as it relates to their learning, and the principal, Mrs. Wright, has had to deal with, and the challenges that she's had to deal with, to make sure that things are running smoothly, and she's able to work with what she's been given to work with. We're asking that you would do that, and if you do that, we certainly will appreciate it. We don't want a patched-up school. I stand in agreement with the gentleman that just was ahead of us, as we, as a Watchman of one voice, we want a new school. We deserve a new school. The school is over fifty years old, it cannot be patched up. The state has said that we need a new school. You don't have proper lighting, everything in that school is outdated. We're in the 21st century, and we deserve a school that represents 21st children, 21st-century children. We want them to grow up, to give back, we want them to learn, and they cannot learn properly under those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, that's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Good morning.
Thank you. I'm John Frederiksen, I'm a resident of Wycomico County, Superintendent of Schools for Wycomico County. I just want to say two things. Thank you for your support for James M. Bennett Phase III, and we are committed to making sure that things go as well as very possible, and have that expedition suitably prepared for our kids. The second thing is, is to say thank you for the other projects, in particular, West Salisbury. We look forward to working with the county executive and the county council to make sure that that is successful. And even in recent weeks, when we've had some discussions, there have been some new ideas that have been shared that I think will be actually beneficial for the project. So thank you, I look forward to working with the county executive on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frederiksen.
My name is John Palmer, I live in Star Road in Delmar, Maryland. And I know the council's not going to like what I have to say, but that's okay, we voted them in. In 2000, the people were not satisfied with what was happening in the, with the county with taxes, so the people took it into their hands to limit the borrowing capacities of the, or the taxing authority of the county council. Everybody wants new schools. As you can see, the way we're going, every news, everybody who comes up here from now on is going to be demanding a new school. And that's a big responsibility on you. So I have a suggestion. In Delaware, it's not up to the county councils to approve the monies for the school. It goes to vote for the people, and the people vote for it. Maybe this is what we need in the county in order to assist you. And whether you do something for or against, you won't be a good guy, you won't be a bad guy. It'll be the people who will be doing the voting. So, that's a suggestion, and you might be hearing that suggestion again. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm President of Wycomico County NAACP. To President Cannon and members of the county council and all those assembled, good morning. One of the things I wanted to say to the Watchmen, I am, when I saw you on TV last night, when I see you here now, thank God for you. Thank God for you, because I support, and NAACP support, everything that you're doing. It's really needed, and I just thank you for that. And then, I guess I have a question that no one needs to answer, but just think about it. Since you all have taken office, a few people have tried to reverse the decisions made by the previous administration. And that's how it looks, you're not saying it, but that's how it looks to us, that that's happening. I want to commend you for voting to keep Bennett, and also to keep West Salisbury moving. Another question I have, and I could have heard this wrong, but there have been some talk of renovating or doing something to the stadium. And I guess the concern that I have is, if you're running short of money, why would you put the stadium before children?
Please.
Before children. So that's, you know, that's another thing that citizens are looking at. Just like everyone before me say, look at what has been done. When those decisions were made, they were made by people that reviewed and made a decision. So for this administration to keep revising what the previous administration did, seems to be a problem for many of us. And two things lastly, I would say, I was going to say something about the law enforcement, but since they were honored today, I reserve that to another time. But I will say that on the 26th of March, at seven o'clock, we will be discussing strategies to improve police and citizens' relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ashanti. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Counselor Hall?
Thank you very much for coming today, certainly appreciate it. Your show for the way the government system works is very important, it's very important for us sitting up here, that you have the passion to come during a work day, during the day, and represent yourself, and thank you very much for coming.
Counselor Kilmer?
Yes, thank you all, thank you everyone for coming, we definitely appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Ashanti, for your comments. With new administration, I think there are going to be changes from the way things have done in the past. I don't think there's anything wrong with what Executive Culver's doing. We are two branches of government, though, so sometimes we're going to agree, and sometimes we're not going to agree. That's how our process works, and it's, we're all learning and we're all trying to figure stuff out, so I hope the public realizes that and gives us a little bit of time to figure out what we're doing. In terms of the Bennett situation, you know, these sort of concepts about saving money, we, I think we definitely appreciate that, and I think the council will look forward to, you know, working with the executive and the Board of Education to find ways... and the Board of Education to find ways that, as we go forward with new schools and new buildings, trying to keep costs down, to keep buildings at the most cost-effective level possible. And I think we'll, you know, we look forward to seeing that happen. You know, Mr. Palmer's comments, I guess he left. I grew up in an area where, you know, every school was voted on, too. I don't know if that's, I think the Maryland law prohibits that, but, you know, that's something that is very common around the country, where the citizens directly get to vote on these bond projects. And that's something that I'm certainly open for, although I don't know if it's illegal here. So, but I just appreciate, you know, John, you can always count on Mr. Palmer for thinking outside the box and suggesting things to us that a lot of us haven't thought of before. So I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Councilman Dodd?
Oh, I can speak. Again, Mr. Culver, you're doing a great job. You really are. Timing is bad for a lot of things. I hope you understand that, and I do want to support you. I love old buildings. I don't want to tear anything down. Comptroller Francho and Governor Hogan has made a pledge for schools to make sure that the schools are maintained. They want the schools maintained, so we don't have to continue tearing them down. And in the future, hopefully, we won't have to tear schools down. We'll be able to do the systemic renovations, interior renovations, whatever we need to keep old buildings new and up to date. You are doing a good job. Keep up the good work. We are up here, we all have different ideas, we have constituents that we have to listen to. We can't please everyone. And this is a tough job, and you know it. It's a very difficult job. Some of our decisions aren't going to please everybody, but we do our best, and we like listening to you, like Mary Ashanti, Don Fitzgerald, and John Palmer. It's important that you people come up here and give us our ideas. Email us, call us, whatever you want. We listen to you. You guys have ideas. It's not just us. We are a collective body. We're not going to agree, and that's healthy. That's very healthy. Last meeting, I thanked everyone for attending. We have a good turnout, standing room only. I hope next meeting it's the same way. Please, you're invited to come to all of our meetings. I'm not wearing green today. I see some people out there wearing green. It's St. Patrick's Day. I do have some iris in my blood. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. And if you decide to celebrate today, if you didn't over the weekend, please be safe, be careful out there, and limit your driving. Thank you all.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, thank the Minister Alliance for coming, for your support. We welcome it. We hope to see you up here more often, because as you see, the Bennett, I mean, not the Bennett, the West Salisbury project is just beginning, and we're going to need your faces here to support that till the end. Just don't show up today. We need you here every meeting to support it. And like I told you last night, when I took office, one of my campaign speeches was to get West Salisbury rebuilt, not replenished, because some of the reports that are coming in stating that the building can't be replenished. The building is 50 years old, you know? You can't renovate something that old. So I hope you guys continue to support the project and continue to show up. And, Mr. Culver, we're all learning. And like Kilmer said, we're going to all agree sometimes and sometimes disagree. We're all learning. But at the end of the day, we can shake hands and go home and sleep good and start a new day. It's all a learning curve. We all are here to save taxpayers' money, but, I mean, like you said, the timing was bad. But there'll be other projects in the future we all be able to work on. And I think one of the biggest problems that we're all in this room are having is communication. We need to communicate to all, Board of Education, County Exec, Minister Alliance, the county council. We need to communicate among themselves, so we all know what's going on, so we're not blindsided when something comes before us, like, well, we didn't know. So I figure if we can keep communication amongst us open, we all can move forward to any project that comes before us. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Under presidential comments, I would reiterate what's already been said. I really appreciate everyone's attendance here today. We do like to have an audience. I must say that we're talking about renovations and replacements of buildings. I'm concerned about the heat in this room, because it is hot. And I'm told that there's nothing we can do today, so maybe we should have amended that capital improvement program, I'm not sure. But I appreciate you all sitting through this on such a hot morning. I would also like to congratulate the Board of Education and the administration, Dr. Frederiksen, for your cooperation and the way you became engaged in this whole process with the executive and with the council in a very, very cooperative fashion, a very respectful fashion. A lot of pressure on issues like this, and I think that they did very well as far as their demeanor, their presentations throughout the time period, the recommendations that have been made, and the offers of cooperation with everyone here. I would also like to single someone out that I don't normally do, but Principal Grootis, you're in the room, are you? If you could come to the podium just for a second, I'm not going to have you speak. I would just like to thank you and let you know that you're running a fantastic school. The executive and I went to a forum, and I will explain, give the apology to the councilman later on this issue, but Bennett Middle School held a forum that the executive, Mr. Strausberg, and that I attended, and I was absolutely amazed as to how, were there 300 or 400?
There were a little over 300 students who were there.
300 students. How well they were, how well they maintained themselves, how well they spoke, the questions that they asked. You would be shocked. We're in good, we're in good hands. I have to assure you, we are in good hands. And Mr. Portier, as well, certainly does get credit. I know that's where you were going.
Thank you, sir. That is where I was going. Mr. Portier does deserve a lot of the credit for the organization, as well as preparing the students for the visit. So thank you very much.
Yes. And I would also add that council members received letters from these students, numerous letters. And as Vice President Holloway had said at our last meeting, these weren't formal letters. These were letters where they took a lot of time to explain exactly what their circumstances were. They researched this. I had to check some of the particular facts, because I wasn't even aware of some of these points that they were making. They had researched it. It was very articulate, very well done, very concise. And I know I did reply to every single one of those students. But anyway, I did want to thank you again for the great job you're doing. Excellent job.
President Cannon, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You are.
And council members as well. Thank you.
That being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the council session so that we can go into open work session. Does that move? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a 10-minute recess.